Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 5th, 2014 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. And before we approve the agenda, I'd like to recognize our security officer tonight is Officer Elwood from Hickory Ridge High School. We thank you for being here and providing our security. And with that, board members, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter and a second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fantastic. We will move on for items for consideration at our May 12th Business Meeting, and we will ask Ms. Kelly Klutz to come to the podium with budget amendments.
In our budget amendments today, we'll start with a state document. And we only have additions to our revenue, which is a positive thing. We'll have our normal increase to our substitute salaries, and that's just a reimbursement from the state, a small $57 increase in our technology fund, a group home allotment, exceptional children reserve fund, and then our normal increase to transportation for the second semester early college for the transportation. Any questions on the state budget amendment? Okay. We'll move on to our federal budget amendment. We have a small adjustment for $3,000, and that's a CTE capacity building grant. And we'll go to the last one, and that's, again, you're familiar with the Confucius Classroom Grant that we've been receiving throughout our system, $10,000 there for Cox Mill High. Questions?
Good. Assuming with no questions, that means everybody's good for consent. Consent? All right.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Kelly. I was not watching the end of your presentation because I finally got my iPad up and running. So I got distracted there for just a second. So, okay, we'll move on to 3.02, and we'll welcome Dr. Chris Lauder to the podium, and we're going to talk about our new elementary school site and further information about the new elementary school. Thank you, Dr. Lauder.
Good evening. We just have a short presentation, a PowerPoint you guys have access to, to go through with our preliminary information for looking at the new elementary school. And I know you guys are aware of some of this, but we just have a little bit of historical background here. First slide, why is a new school in the Odell-Cox Mill area? There's tremendous student attendance growth in that area. It's the highest-growing part of the county right now. There's continual development in that area now, and Odell and Cox Mill Elementary Schools are both at capacity. And as school system was looking for potential sites for elementary schools, as you well know, they examine numerous sites, several different sites for elementary school, and looking for some of those, some of the sites were very expensive for the preparation work that it would take to get those sites ready. The next slide that you guys have is a map of Cabarrus County, and it is the ORED recommendation of where a new elementary school should go. So the circle on that map is actually, according to population and neighborhoods and density, to say the ideal place to put a school because of all that growth would be within that circle. The next map is that circle just close up so you can see exactly where that location is. And one of the things that jumps out in that new location or within that circle would be the old Odell site where Odell was originally. And so with that information, one of the choices that rises pretty quickly is to return the new elementary school to the original site, return Odell to its original site. So as we started looking at that and what the ramifications of that might be, we had to take a lot of things into account when we start discussing. One of the most important things is the history of Odell, of that site and of that school, and the people that live in that community, and how strongly they feel about the school. They have great community support there and really want to be and have been for a really long time, very, very involved with that school and that community. Normally, or usually, we do not have schools that are a mile and a half away from each other. So the old Odell site and the current Odell site are very close, they're about a mile and a half, actually less than a mile and a half away from each other. So as we start looking at those two locations and what it means to have elementary schools that are really, really close to each other, certain things rise to the surface. And so we tried to look at it and say, how do we make sure that we maximize the two buildings there, but also not divide this community that has this tremendous history and pride and support for the school at Odell Elementary School? So we start looking at those locations, and obviously, at this point, we don't draw lines or haven't drawn any kind of attendance line, but we start looking at those areas to see, where might some of those fall? If we did it, how would this work? And we really struggled in that area with, because there are some very large neighborhoods in that area and because a lot of the population is so dense, if we have those two schools that close to each other, how can we make sure that we don't leave empty seats in one building and also not split up the community? So you wouldn't have a neighborhood that would have one side of the street that went to one school and another side of the street that went to the other school, which is very possible, again, when you have that much density and large neighborhoods in the community. So again, we talked about that, we thought about that a lot, and as we started looking at options and ways that we could handle that, one of the ideas that rose to the surface was, what if we had an Odell primary, which would be a K-2 school, and an Odell Elementary that would be a 3-5? So everybody that attended both of those two schools would go to Odell Elementary School, but the students would go to one for K-2 and go to the other 3-5. And that would be a way to, again, return Odell to its original site and unify the neighborhood instead of dividing that neighborhood. And as we looked at that more closely, we talked about instruction or how that might work, and again, as many of you are aware, elementary schools now often already naturally divide themselves K-2 and 3-5. For example, some elementary schools have a K-2 field day and a 3-5 field day. A lot of the K-2 groups meet together, almost like primary and 3-5 meets together. I actually have a third grade daughter right now, and most people will tell you that they feel a shift in the school when they go K-2. It's, hey, let's get them into school, and let's make sure we're working. And then when they hit that third grade, it's when testing begins, accountability ramps up. So a lot of people already feel a divide between K-2 and 3-5 that's kind of natural based on teaching and age level. In this scenario, grade levels and PLCs would not be divided, they would actually add. So instead of having to divide the kindergarten team up and send half the kindergarten teachers to one school and half to another, all the kindergarten teachers would be in one location, and you would actually be hiring to add to that and keep them unified. PLCs and the movement with PLCs over the last five or six years has been so large, rather than break those up in groups that have been working together, they would stay together and add. And then, again, each school could really focus on those grades, concentrate on primary issues, and serve those age-appropriate settings. So again, if you think of coming out of preschool or coming to school for the first time and what that entails and how you can set up a school to really kind of nurture that in one location and focus on that and then move to another once they were used to school and work with that, it's something that was very interesting, and some of the educators that we talked to said, you know, that's actually really exciting to think about doing it differently and maybe organizing a school a little bit differently than some of our other elementary schools. Culturally, again, the school community can attend, could attend both schools, so you don't have this divide that we talked about. We wouldn't have to divide up neighborhoods or streets or, again, big neighborhoods. All the students would have the same school name, the same school colors, the same mascot. So every student would, you know, experience being an Odell dragon instead of having to split that up and name them something else, which may seem like a small thing, but it's actually something that means a lot to the neighborhood and the community. And so when we all looked at this, talked about this, all the stakeholders, everybody that we pulled together to look at, all members of cabinet, the more we talked about it, the more we kept saying, you know, this really rises to the surface as the best choice to work with in this area. And we should just go ahead and say, we really think this is the best thing to do with this neighborhood, and we feel like that it will, anytime you redistrict students to a new school, somebody's probably not going to be happy. But in this scenario, we felt like we could unify that community the most by having a K-2 and 3-5. So again, at this point, with every one that we've looked at unanimously, there isn't anybody that disagrees at this point internally with us, thinks that the best option for returning Odell to its original site is to go with a K-2 and a 3-5 model. And so because some of the design work is being done at this point, also at this time to say, probably need to move towards seeing if the school board is behind that and wants to support that before we move further on, because design work would have to be done to say, we're going to make this one K-2 and this one 3-5. And I will certainly try to answer your questions if I can. There's probably a lot of questions in different areas that we can try to answer, and Mr. Burnett is here for some of the, I'm sorry.
Dr. Marsh.
Oh, yes. Dr. Marsh, and some people from the community are here also.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Dr. Lauder. We appreciate that information, and yes, there's quite a bit here to talk about. Before we get to questions, and the one thing I did want to mention was going back, and Ms. Carpenter served with me on the committee that was trying to find the parcel, and we had representation from the county office, we had school, two board members, and some school administrative folks as well. And it really was kind of a long, arduous process to try to figure out where we were going to go, and the number of parcels were really quite limited when we knew where the area that we wanted to go and be. And if you remember, when we first commissioned the ORED study, we talked about, hey, there's going to be a star on the map or a dot on the map or whatever the term was we used. And if you go back and if you look at where the proverbial star was, it literally was right down the road from the old Odell. So I don't know if we...
Yeah, he's on there. Go back to that.
Well, that was, the blue dot showed our current site, but the proverbial little X was left of that down 73. But I mean, it, you know...
The next slide is just a close-up of the circle.
Yeah, that's just the same. Anyway, the point is, we've circled in and found a parcel that we already owned, at least partially. I mean, we owned the whole parcel, but we needed to expand out. So through all of that, it's taken a while to get here and a couple reverberations of various things, and, you know, once we sort of knew what the site was going to be, is when Dr. Shepherd and his team could look through and try to figure out, okay, how do we make this work? Because typically, you don't, as Dr. Lauder said, you don't build a school right down the road from another school. So with that being said, that's just a little bit of the background of how we arrived at the site. We really, literally only had two sites that were even worth looking at. And the other site, I've got a number in my mind that I remember, the site work was about $7 million. Dave, is that, okay. So once we looked at that and we used a computer program called SiteOps to do that, that really made that site a lot less palpable. So anyway, that kind of swerved us back. There's a lot of things that have pointed us back in the direction of taking advantage of a parcel that we already own. So with that, we will open it up for questions, and Rob, since you're on the, I'm not sure, I've forgotten what we're calling the committee, the Student Assignment Committee, and you're the board liaison, we'll start the questions on your end.
Okay. Well, we looked at some things, but we had to make this decision if we're going to make a K-2 school or a K-5 school, because that's going to determine where that, those boundaries would be. So at this step, if we are going to go with the K-2, 3-5, I think it makes, it allows us, just looking at that, it allows us to not affect as many people as we would otherwise because of the fact that they're so close. If you look at Highway, you know, 73, it's kind of limited on the population up north of that. All those folks need to go somewhere. Anyway, but we did sit down, we did look at a lot of different aspects. My question, I guess, is more oriented to the cost of the construction and deciding which school would be the 3-5, K-2. And if I understand right, you know, Odell as it is currently doesn't have any real land for recess or playgrounds and that type of thing. So if you had this site here, would it make more sense to have that as the 3-5 school?
The current school makes more sense for that to be the primary school, the pre-K through 2, and the new school to design that for grades 3, 4, and 5.
And then what kind of expenses would we be looking at to modify the existing school?
Actually, we would be anticipating savings, a great deal of savings due to footprint would be smaller, and the, and time, we do need to talk about time. The timing for the new school would be instead of August of 2015, which was very, very sketchy. We would be looking at a Christmas opening of 2015. When you do that, that does help with the budget a great deal also, because we were basically trying to shrink a, you know, 14, 15, 16-month construction duration into 12 months.
And I think that's a significant factor to consider as well. Then we've talked a little bit about transportation savings, where you could still have, the kids still would stop, the bus would stop, pick up the children, but stop at both schools.
That's a detail that needs to be finalized, but as far as the location of the school, and it was the optimal location based on transportation cost and time.
Okay. Well, let Carolyn ask some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
Okay. You've kind of thrown me off here, and when I say this, with this new plan, first of all, how many number of students were you planning on putting into this? You, I mean, you know, when we first started talking about the new school, my original, I was thinking it was going to be 1,000 students. With this new plan, how many students are you talking about with this new school?
What we currently are working on is 800 student core capacity with 1,000 student core capacity, and that's K-5.
Okay. So you're still talking about 1,000 core capacity?
Core capacity, yes.
For this?
For a K-5. So with this program of three grades, 3, 4, and 5, we would still be looking at the same. If you run the numbers and really match the number of students per classroom and do it in a design calculation like we do, we're specifically looking at 772 students or 777 students in that neighborhood.
So you're going to be not just doing the Odell students, you're still going to be bringing some from Cox Mill? So you are going to be taking that overcrowding from Cox Mill?
Yes.
So that's my other question. You're going to be bringing those students back from Voger that you took from the farms then and bring those students back, because that was one of the big things when you took those students from the farms, that was the whole, I hate to say "the" deal, but, you know, when they were moved over there, the whole thing was, we're just moving you over there kind of temporary till we can get the new school, so you can bring you back. So that was my question.
It's definitely on the radar. Everyone's aware of those issues and those situations, and that's really a discussion for, you know, in the future, but certainly those are well aware of.
Okay. To get them back, what I'm saying, within the neighborhood, because that was the whole problem. We didn't have the school, and now we've got the school. And that was why I was worried when you're talking about this new concept, is that going to be a problem? But it won't be, you're saying, that it wouldn't be with this new concept?
The two, the goals of the new school were to help relieve overcrowding at Cox Mill Elementary School and at Odell Elementary School.
So it is both. When I saw the Odell, it kind of worried me. I wanted to make sure with that Odell name put to it, it is not just Odell, it would include those others. That's why we want to make sure that is clear, that it would include those other ones, and we are not changing those numbers, correct?
Both schools will be experiencing relief from the new school.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll just go ahead and jump to one of my questions. We'll lose trailers at Cox Mill Elementary. How many?
We will, and that, again, would be a function of the assignment change.
Then give me a roundabout.
Well, we want to lose all of them, and that's...
12 or 14?
I think we have 16 total between the two schools, and...
Yeah. That's what, I had the same question, Carolyn, and the number I had in my mind, I think, was 14, so that, anyway. Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Schumaker?
So the existing, the current Odell, the new old Odell, what is the core and what's the current occupancy of that school?
It's, the last time a capacity study was done, I think it had a listed capacity of 946 students. When you change the grade structure, and it's now going to be primary, you don't have as many students in each classroom, so the design capacity would be reduced. What we would be expecting is it would fall in the neighborhood of 777 students.
On the new old Odell?
The current.
And I'm talking about the current one that's in operation today. Okay. So how much, what is our utilization of that school once, what are we anticipating the fill of that school percentage-wise? Are we going to be at 90%? Are we going to have some growth potential in the two schools once we, if we go with this plan?
Well, we certainly have the opportunity.
Will we have some room for growth, or are we going to redistrict? I mean, what are y'all's thinking?
I think the simple answer is, it depends on where you draw the lines. So you can draw the lines, you know, and make it whatever you want, but I think capacity-wise, when they look at that, that it would, if it's 775-ish, that, like you said, it would be over 90% full when we open, but some of that will get down to the details of where exactly you draw the line. So is that answer your question?
It kind of answers my question, but, you know, the thing is, is not only is it fast-growing there, but Cox Mill area is equally as quick, and even if you were to take some capacity off of that, we may be still back in looking for another site not too far future because of the way the building is going on in that area, in that, okay.
And when we ran, again, we're running numbers based on just, we run five, six, seven, eight different scenarios of where those lines can be, because, again, they can be anywhere. We were taking Cox Mill down between 850 and 900 or so was the number we were getting them down to when we were doing the others. Now, again, that can vary, because you can take one neighborhood or one piece of a neighborhood and change that, but I think we felt pretty comfortable that Cox Mill would be between 850 and 900 students in that scenario.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question that I have is relevant to the K-2 at the old new Odell. That's what we'll have to call it until we get, I guess. But anyway, are we going to grandfather any of those kids? I mean, when they go, that school starts in August, you're saying the school's going to open in December. Are we going to switch the kids in December? Are we going to leave the kids there through the year?
Well, again, that, those options are on the table, but what we would be trying to do in that scenario is to say, all that would happen is the K-2 students would move into this building, and the, or the 3-5 students would move, the K-2 students would stay in that building. And then as far as picking up other schools, when you start talking about a Cox Mill or a Voger or wherever, those would be decisions you would have to decide, when is the appropriate time to move them?
Well, obviously, I'm just one. I can't speak for the board, but, you know, as long as I've been on the board, we've never opened a school any time other than the normal opening year, which it was pretty distinct. You did your redistricting in plenty of time, where everybody knew where they was going and all that. But in a case like this, it obviously is different, because we're making a structure change. We're going from a K-5 to two different schools, a primary and then the K-2, and, which I think is a great idea to help solve some of the relief, you know, the problems that we're having up there. But then again, I do, I just trying to look out for the students there. I particularly would not like to see us switch the kids in the middle of the year.
I know...
For academic reasons primarily.
And I believe, I was still teaching at the time, so I can't speak too, I wasn't involved, but I believe when Odell was overcrowded before, a lot of those students moved to Weddington, so we're talking 1996, is that right?
Yeah. One time Wolf Meadow, they capped and there...
Dr. Marsh, would you come forward and just make sure she's on the microphone?
When Weddington opened, in other words, I believe, and Ms. Marsh, Dr. Marsh certainly knows more than I do, but those students, they had those students in mobile units, so in the middle, Weddington opened in the middle of the year, and that group of students from Odell moved over and picked up, because they knew these classrooms are moving in the middle of the year. They started the year knowing that, and they moved that year over when Weddington opened.
And then one time we were capped, and in the middle of the year, they went to Wolf Meadow the rest of the year. And then I know when I was assistant principal at Wincoff, we moved in the middle of the year, because I went to Odell as principal right before that happened, and we kind of like made a celebration of it and like went over the weekend, got the rooms ready, got everything, and we just kind of like marched in there, you know? So it can be done, and I know it did, we did do that way when Weddington opened, and I had 13 mobiles for Weddington Elementary.
What about the teachers? Will the teachers go with them?
Yes.
So the teachers, or words, so we've got, once this teaching K-2 now...
Right.
They'll pick up and go to, well, they'll stay.
They'll stay.
They'll stay. And then for the new school...
Right.
Your current 3-5 will go to the new Odell.
Right. And it really makes sense, because I was wondering, why would you pick, hey, two one place, 3-5 the other? But looking at the school and financially, there's 18 classrooms already with bathrooms, so that would have to be, that would have to be built into the new 3-5 Odell if you, I mean, if you switched them. So, and also, the older kids would probably like more room to run and play...
I think so.
Because recess is a nightmare out there, but we've got it all organized. So there's a lot of different cost savings plus having geared toward the older kids. So that makes sense. I'm really excited about it.
Well, it does make a lot of sense, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense, but like I said in the beginning, you know, my concern was for the students, but now, if the teachers is going with them, you know, they're just going to pack up and go from this classroom to this classroom, different location, a mile and a half apart, that should be a pretty easy transition out there.
And that community is so strong, and they have been transitioned so many times that, that, you know, it's, they're really not sure where their allegiance is.
Right.
But I think that if they can come back and be Odell 1, Odell 2, or whatever, you know...
There's still going to be a dragon either way.
There's going to be a dragon.
So that's a good thing.
They're not getting the dragon.
So that's a good thing. They just go Dragon 1, Dragon 2, I guess.
But they can order that dragon the first thing they do, like I do.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think, I think for knowing the community, knowing the staff, I think instead of dividing again, it would be less, you know, heartache in the community.
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, that's my opinion. I'm very excited about this. There is a difference between K-2, 3-5, and another thing is the land. I mean, the kids, the older kids would have some more land to play on, run and play and football and things like that. So that's...
My next question, now you don't have to answer this, I'm just picking on you. Are you going to stay or go? No, you don't have to answer that.
Wow. You like to put me on the spot, don't you? I don't know, I'm getting so excited.
Plead to film. Just plead to film, it'll be all right.
No, I know. I know, we've been through a lot of years of 16 years there.
Yes, yes.
And you helped with the building of the new Odell, replacement of Odell.
Both of them, looks like.
Right, right, right.
Oh, man.
But cost-effectively, too, if you're looking at cost and the way you can build a building for the older kids, it makes more sense this way.
Well, I appreciate your input, Ms. Marsh.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Lauder, I just have one more question, and it's sort of alluding to what Mr. Schumaker had in reference to when we opened the school in December, if that's when it is. Because what I don't really want, another thing, is I just don't want us to have another Bethel, 400 or 500 seats open, because as a board, we take a lot of heat anyway, just because that didn't quite develop like it should have in the Bethel area, but then, of course, that's going to pick up as the economy grows, and we'll, it's going to take years to get that up, but I don't want the same situation to happen out there. And so are we going to open up, sort of like what Mr. Schumaker said, are we going to be able to open up with, you know, this core capacity is going to be 1,000, are we going to build it for 800? Are we going to have, was it the 772 that you said is what we would open up with?
Yeah, when Mr. Burnett was talking about that, it looks like that we're talking 772, 77, one's a little bit different with each one, for each one of those two sites.
Each, okay, and of course, that's going to bring down the other feeder schools that we're talking about that would come into these two schools here.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And again, we're, so, and the number, again, depends on the lines, but we were looking at Cox Mill, 850, 875, with most of the scenarios, those two buildings would both be over 90%. So some room there, and hopefully would alleviate...
Plus getting rid of the mobile home, mobile units there.
Yes.
And that's a good thing in itself, so I think it's two thumbs up for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison, do you have comments or questions?
Mainly that Ms. Marsh sat down before I could give her some requests for more of her coconut cake. But we'll move on to serious things, I suppose. I appreciate this very high level presentation that you're making to us. I would ask in the next presentation, it be put in some kind of tabular format where actual numbers and the variables can be laid out. I'd do better with that kind of, a little bit more detail than, than this. But we're not ready, I don't suppose yet, to put it in that format. That is going to be off in some future. But before we have more discussions about this, I'd like to actually see numbers here, numbers there, comparisons to be made, and advantages and disadvantages analyzed into each of those options, please. But on the face of it, I'm, I do want to be supportive, and I do hope you'll, you know, move forward with these considerations. But in my case, give us enough granular detail for me to get a better sense of what the actual numbers, expenses, and the variables would be, please. Thank you.
Okay, do you guys, before we go to Dr. Phillips, are you understanding what he's asking for?
Well, I was just saying.
Because David, I want to, here's what I want to make sure that you got. We're, this is a concept. And so, next Monday, we're going to vote on whether we're going to proceed with this concept or not. Or, you know, we're not going to have boundary districts, that's coming. We're going to have that in June, probably June, is what I'm thinking. Costs, and I guess I'm jumping ahead to some of my comments now, the, the architecture, change of scope. I mean, there's, those are kinds of, but I just, I wasn't 100% sure what, what you were asking. And I just, I want to make sure, you know, it doesn't matter if I know, as long as they know, what, what you're after, whatever other detail.
Conversations and probably get the information I need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Phillips, you have questions or comments?
I have comments. First, I am thrilled with the selection of the site for several reasons. First, the community out there is used to having a school at that location. Second, this will get rid of what is rapidly becoming a major eyesore, which is the old Odell buildings that are falling apart now, unfortunately. And, third, it's going to save us money because we already own most of the land. And so, that means that the money that's been allocated to us by the county will go farther. And, and that's certainly important in these days. Now, one of you said something about that we needed to expand the footprint. Can you expand on that at this meeting? Is that public information yet?
Actually, as far as changing from a K5 to a grade 3-4-5, 3-5, the footprint actually is reduced. And so, that does help.
Okay, so the building footprint, but I was thinking of the land.
Just the building footprint. And the land is another great asset, and that's something that folks have been talking about. The grades, the upper grades, for those students to have those fields, to be able to run and play is going to be a, make a big difference, you know, for their, you know, for their stay at that school.
I agree. I think the existing Odell school is a great elementary school with superb staff. But its one drawback is it doesn't have enough land around it. And so, I agree that it would make more sense to give the bigger kids the room to roam, and, and to actually have ballgames and things like that. And then the smaller ones can, can use what little land is available there at the, the existing Odell. So, I think that makes sense. In terms of comparing the concept of, of building two K5, or having two K5s that close together, or doing what you're proposing, which is a K2 and a 3-5, clearly the latter is, is the way to go. Because of, as I understand it, from what the, the student committee has looked at, or the site selection committee has looked at, if you went to two K5s, there's no way that you could do it without splitting Moss Creek in half. Where some of the children in Moss Creek would have to go to one school and some in another. And that just is, is not a good way to go. So, so I'm, I'm certainly in favor. The only thing that I ask, and maybe you can talk about it right now, and if not, let, bring it up, let's discuss it at the next meeting, is, think fast forward ahead 12 years. And we have filled it with whatever boundaries we come up with for, for drawing students into the, the double school. We fill it up. Now, what do we do? We can expand the 3-5 because as I understand it, the new building will be built for, for expansion. Does that help us? Will we have to pull some second grade classes up? So, so think through that. I mean, I guess eventually what we'll have to do is we'd have to shrink the enrollment boundaries. And then, some of the children would have to go to a different elementary school. But anyway, think that through a little bit, and maybe we can talk about it a little more next week. But everything I hear, one thumbs up.
All right, thank you, Dr. Phillips. And I, I think the, the point that you were just making about the boundary and as it relates to each school moving forward is something that Mr. Schumaker had, had asked and brought up. And I think really, Rob, at your committee level, that's where you guys are going to have to delve into the details a little bit of that, just to make sure we're as efficient as we possibly can be in capitalizing on how we get the same group, not the group of students, but the same number, and have the seats that bump forward as they, as they go up. So, couple, couple other quick things. Dr. Marsh, I'm glad you were, you were here to offer your support. Thank you very much, because I was curious of what, you know, what your thoughts were on that. So, that, I think that was an important point to make. The one thing I'd mentioned previously, we are going to have to go back to the architect and have, negotiate a fee on the change of scope. So, just so everybody knows, there'll be, Dave will be coming back to us with a change order on the, the contract with the architect. Because this is a change in scope of where we started versus where we are now. The smaller footprint may help us a little bit in siding the building. There's some bearing capacity issues out there that we discovered during the due diligence with our geotechnical report. With a smaller footprint, we may have a little more flexibility, and it may end up, that, that may end up being a benefit to us as well. If it's an area that we can keep from having a bigger footing or something of that nature, or doing some sort of geotechnical remedy on soft soil on that, that site. In our testing, did have some soft soil, which was part of what we were swerving into of not, maybe not being able to do a two-story school. So, we're kind of juggling a little bit of that, but that's all coming. But a smaller footprint's going to help us with that. The, the rock wall, is it in the right of way, and will it be able to stay?
Do I have to answer that?
We might as well get it out in the open now.
We are making our best efforts to save any part of that wall that we can. Any part that does get affected, that does need to be removed, we do want to incorporate the, the material in the project. So, in no way do we anticipate losing the wall and losing the material and not utilizing it on the project.
Right. And, and a lot of that's going to be driven by the Department of Transportation, is that correct?
That's correct. It's, it's our road widens, our, our turn lanes, things like that that are going to impact it.
Right. So, as we're sitting at the table with them, and we're begging and pleading to keep the wall, just so everybody understands, we don't get to make the final call. So, and that. And just to reiterate, the, the January opening thing, because I think that, my one minor hiccup, and I'll be honest with you, I was sort of skeptical, you know, maybe it's, because I just, it was a foreign concept to me to split these up. And, and so, it, it took some, I just had to ask questions and try to get, get a sense and a feel for where we're going with this. The, the one piece that I'm just not 100% sure about, and I'm, I'm confident that your team will make it happen and work, but it's in, in December, when we're putting FFNE in the new building, and we're getting it all ready, and we've got the other school that has everybody in it, they leave for break, and then in a week and a half, it's a new school with different, it's only K2, and everybody else is gone. And how, the time to make that little transition to make it work. So, that, that's the one piece that, that I'm just, I'm, I'm, I guess skeptical is probably, I'm not skeptical in that. I'm just worried that that time crunch is going to be pretty severe, and the stress level will be pretty high. But that's for Dr. Shepherd to worry about.
Sort of related to the, to the question that Mr. Schu asked as well, we'll, we'll have lots of opportunities, and we'll ask you to make decisions such as, will we move students from anywhere other than Odell at, at that December break? And if that's the case, we could move just the 3-5 students over to the new school, and then we could work to prepare the classrooms that are left in the current Odell Elementary School, prepare them for the next fall. Or we could, as, as we've talked about already, prepare the students that are at Cox Mill that will be moving, and the students will be at Bogor who will be moving, and already have them organized in classrooms with their teachers. And so, they're all prepared to move. So, you'll have some options along the way to decide whether it's a wholesale move at Christmas. And you say, we'll open it at Christmas, and that made me think we need to put a bow around it so we can open it, yeah. But, or whether we'll move it in stages. But that's, that's certainly something that we're going to have to plan toward and talk toward. I think the next logical step is, you know, just deciding which students.
Right. Well, that's, you know, we, we've got to approve the concept, so we'll decide whether that's an action item for next week or consent. But then, I'm, I'm of the opinion, I think that in June, we probably need to go ahead and get, get some boundary lines together and start the conversation. Because, you know, we've, we've, we've got some time to do it, but there's just no real reason to wait and put it off. You know, we might as well try to figure out how and when we're going to make that happen. So, my recommendation at the, at our agenda meeting will be that, that we have that on the agenda for June. So, board members, are we okay for the, the concept being on the consent? Or do you want to have further discussion next week and put it on action?
I think this is major enough that we should give the community an opportunity to talk to us about this if they feel the need. So, let's, let's put it on the action agenda.
Okay, we will put that on the action agenda for next week. And thank you, Dr. Lauter, for your presentation. We certainly do appreciate it. And we will keep you at the podium for 3.03, our policies revisions. And if you will start with that, we would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, our policies on first read, most of these, until we get down to the vehicle policy, which the board instructed us to work on, are, they're updates. As I told, as I told the board a few minutes ago, that we've had like 36 that are changes that have come in in the last revision. And so, a lot of them are required or strongly recommended, which is the, the first section here. So, we'll try to go through those. The first one, Title I, Parent Involvement, deletes the reference to Reading First, which is a federal grant program, and that's been discontinued. That's a required change. So, that should be a pretty standard change. The second change, Board Member Conflict of Interest, clarifies the circumstances under which a board member is prohibited from attempting to influence a contract, and clarifies the provision regarding contracts with a board member spouse. Those are not required, but strongly recommended. Board Member Compensation and Expenses adds a requirement, board members' requests for reimbursement be accompanied by documentation. Clarifies the board will approve requests for reimbursement that are reasonable and documented, makes minor editorial revisions. Those are all recommended, not required, but recommended. Closed Session adds a provision to recognize that groups such as board committees and school improvement teams are subject to the policy, which is required, and adds a formulation or adoption of the school's safety components of school improvement plans to the list of permissible purposes to have a closed session meeting, which is also required. Yeah, the next one is confidentiality program, which deletes other resources statement in the references section, that's the only change. Student Discipline Records replaces the reference to NCYS with generic language. The board could replace it with Power School, but we could change that. That's kind of why this change is there. And Updates Other Resources, the hyperlink. And then, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts update, all it does is update the hyperlink, and that's recommended. And then, Behavior Standards for Transfer Students, minor revision removing the requirement for a notary to certify transfer enrollment information. What's that? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. So, those are the, the changes. Before we get to the, the local vehicle policy, which is our own current. So, again, if you have questions or comments about those, those are pretty standard changes, but we can certainly try to answer them.
Okay. Board members, any questions about the ones that he's gone over so far? Mr. Walter?
I had a couple minor questions, and I guess comments on each one of these things. On the first one?
Tell us which one you're on.
Okay, first one was what?
Title I, Parent Involvement.
Title I, Parent Involvement. Section 3, where it says, annual meeting, meeting, I think. What did I have? I had something, let me bring up the, bring it up for a second.
Section C.
Yes, on the second page.
Do we call that an annual meeting, or do we call that an open house? What do we, what do we call that? If it's an open house, or if that's what that is, maybe we should stay, say what that is. It is an open, it is a meeting. Okay, that was my question on that one.
Okay. You've got a couple?
A couple, but.
All right, well, while you're looking, does anybody else have one? Dr. Phillips, David, Mr. Schu?
Ah, you're back on the hot seat, Rob.
All right, next one. This is the Board Member Conflict of Interest. And my comment here was to change the, the word, pecuniary, is that the word? To financial? I mean, most people who read that don't use that word.
Where, where are we at in the policy?
First paragraph. Second line.
Oh, yes.
I guess David could tell me how to pronounce that correctly, but.
And is there a suggestion of?
I would have said financial, because that's what it's talking about.
Can you give us the legal definition of the word?
I actually think, I mean, pecuniary is a financial interest, so I think that's probably a good substitution.
Okay, I'm just going, as a lemon reading this thing, trying to figure out what that is. It, to me, it was, it should be easier to read for the.
Right.
So, just change that word to financial?
Well, let's plan on changing it. I'll do a check to make sure there's no unusual meaning. But I'm not aware of pecuniary having any special meaning beyond a financial. It may, it could be a personal interest, it might not be financial is the only, you know? But I think that we go on to address gaining a benefit, whether it's money or not. In other, you know, you, you could get a, you know, if you're getting a free vacation, that's a pecuniary interest, even though it's not a direct transfer of money. I think.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it, making it easier, easier to read when I first read it. I had to actually.
I think that's probably a good change.
No, that's all right.
So, let's plan on making that change. If I have a concern, I'll let you know.
If, if there's some reason we can't make it, Mark will let us know. Otherwise, we're going to make the change. All right, Mr. Walter, anything else?
On that one, no. This is the Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
Yes.
Bring that up. I had, we're, it looks like we're repeating ourselves under some of the changes that were made in that, that second paragraph. That last sentence probably is not necessary. And let me try to read that again.
I'm, I'm not following you. Where are you?
When I read it, I said, it said something like, the board member incurring the expense must sign the reimbursement request, and the board chairperson, and it says, or the vice chairman person if the request is for the board chairperson's reimbursement, or the board chairperson is unavailable. But then we go on to say, request for the reimbursement submitted by the chairperson will be approved by the superintendent. And that's, is that? So, who approves it? Does the vice chairperson approve the chairman's reimbursement, or does the superintendent?
The superintendent, I believe, approves the chairman. The, the vice chairman can approve the other board members if the chairman is not available. That, that's what it's saying. So, the chairman would approve all of them, except for his own, or her own.
Is that what we're saying here, or is that, is it?
That's the way I read it. You can defer to Mr. Enriquez, but that's the way.
I'm, I'm, that's the way.
Sorry, I read it, but I think the reason it's got the reference to the vice chair is also, I think the idea is you want two board member signatures on all of them, including the chair. So, the chair would sign his own and have the vice chair sign it. I don't know if that's, that's how I read it now. I don't know if that's done. But that seems to call.
I don't think we've been having two signatures on it.
Let me, maybe, maybe I misread you.
It wasn't clear to me when I was reading, how it works.
The board chair will approve.
Well, I take that back, there are two signatures. The one, the person submitting the request signs it, and then it's either signed by the chairman for everybody except for his or her own. And then if, in which case, it would be the superintendent would approve the chairman's. If the chairman or chairwoman is not available, and the vice chairman is available, that person can sign the document. person can sign the document. And that, that's the way I'm reading it.
You, as the chair, do you, you sign it and submit it? Does it go to the vice chair for review, or just to the superintendent? Because I guess that's, I think, this would suggest that it would probably go to the vice chair and then be approved by the superintendent. I don't know if we need to do that, but I, that's, I think, the ambiguity that Mr. Walter's addressing.
I haven't submitted any since I've been the chair, so I don't...
Wait, wait.
I haven't given one to babies, but I also haven't given one to Dr. Schu.
The way that we've done it in the past is the board member signs his own expense reimbursement form, submits it to the chair, and the chair signs it. And then the chair sends it on up to finance, and then Kelly takes care of the pay-in. In the event of the chairman's expense, the superintendent usually approves that, and if he's not available, the vice chair can. That's the way we've done it in the past.
Kelly's organization.
Okay. Mark, if you're reading that differently, or if it's saying something different than the way that we have been proceeding, then we need to address it.
Based on what Mr. Schu...
Based on what Mr. Schu has described, I actually think we can probably strike the words in black in the parenthetical, where we say, "And the board chair or the vice chair." I think we should then strike if the request is for the board chairperson's reimbursement, and just leave it, or the vice chair if the board chair is unavailable. That would seem to comport with your current practice.
Okay. Dr. Louder, you clear on that?
And the board chairperson, and then we just strike all the way up to, and then parentheses, "Or the board chairperson," I mean, "or the vice chairperson..."
If the board...
"If the board chairperson is unavailable."
That's correct.
My other suggestion was on the last sentence of the first paragraph, to include the words liaison or committee assignments, in addition to the additional responsibilities. And not saying that we should do that, but that it be at least considered, because some of us do take on quite a bit, additional meetings and additional assignments that some may not. I don't know, at some point, we might want to think about that, but it's just, if it's related to the time that the chair and the vice chairman put in, there are other, there are other things that we do that might want to be considered.
Rob, the way that, the way that we used to do that, and Ms. Klutz could speak to this, before the changes was made, when I came back on for my third term, was that your compensation was broken down, where that you got so much as compensation, and then you got some for travels, travel expense. You remember that, Ms. Klutz? And then all of that went away, but then we got 1099s back then, too. And then, of course, the state changed all of that, where it's a W-2 now, as if we were employees of the system. But you just get a compensation, and it's not broken down anyway. So what you're referring to would be maybe to look at some type of a budgetary impact at some point in the future to recognize board members for other liaison positions and things like that.
Yes.
Which, basically, what we did before was just what I said. You know, the compensation part, and I understand that the county commission does theirs that way. They do that. They have the compensation part, and then they have a travel part. But they're still W-2s, just like we are. And I obviously had to check into that.
I mean, I don't know if we want to consider that, or...
What kind of wording are you asking to go in the...
The additional responsibilities of the board chairperson, the vice chairman chairperson, or liaison committee assignment, I guess, will be considered as part of this budget process, or could be considered as part of budget process. Does that make any sense, or is that...
Liaison assignment.
Well, I guess if that's broad enough, where I would be more comfortable sending that back to the Policy Committee for discussion, and then having them come back to give us some sort of recommendation, since we're sort of opening or broadening the scope of what we would then be willing to... I think there's just a little more to it than that, than adding that little verbiage.
Okay.
And one more thought on this, and I don't have the numbers on it, but I do remember, I think it was probably 2006 or probably 2007, whenever we had to do that major cut, and the board had, we took a cut, too, if you remember. I can't remember how much the cut was.
One to 15?
I don't remember. It was like 15%. The board took that cut. And so obviously, since 2008, everything has gone up. Fuel's up, everything's up, and the board hasn't had any kind of an increase. So it might be something that could be considered, you know, for, like Mr. Walters and all of us, we have four, five, or six items that we act as liaison for, committees, town councils, and things like that, yet our pay has remained the same, with no consideration for all these things that we're doing. But, you know, that, I'm perfectly happy with it, because when I got on the board originally, I didn't know there was any pay associated with it. So, you know, it doesn't really matter that much to me, because it's part of the job, you might say. It's just part of it.
Yeah. I'm not advocating for the pay. I'm just advocating for the consideration of it at that point, just so it...
Tell you what...
I think you're right.
Okay. Why don't we do this? If we can approve the changes that we're trying to make, since this has already been through the Policy Committee, and then we'll make the recommendation that the Policy Committee can look at adding some verbiage if we want to include some, a blurb there about the liaisonships or committee for the board members as a whole. Is that reasonable enough?
Good for me.
So 2130, we take back to the committee with that?
Well, we're going to, we're going to keep this, what you've got, in the group to be approved. Well, I mean, it's in first read, so we're not going to pull it out. But sometime in the next round, that one was going to be back in the hopper, and you can look at adding something to that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other comments? All right. Now we're going to move on to 6525.
On which, we're still going through these, or...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have minor comments on most of them. I'm not sure, I mean, some of them probably can go offline. I mean, it's...
So these are, are we up to 2321, closed session?
I don't have any comments on that one.
Okay.
The next one is the North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program.
I think I suggested adding the email address under the first paragraph of Item A. Or it has a phone number, and there's also an email address associated with that, and then there was also a website that has been updated. I think that's towards the bottom.
You mean, when it says the Attorney General's Confidentiality Program, put a web...
It's, "An applying for the program may be obtained by telephone or by email address," and that email address was acp@ncdoj.gov.
I'm not sure. Where is that on the policy?
It's under the phone, you've got it on...
A.
A, first paragraph of A, end of the paragraph.
And just add the current email address and website. Is that what you're saying?
The email address, yes.
Does anybody have any objection of adding the email address to that? Okay. That's fine.
And I think at the bottom, there was a refer, there was a link, or that you've removed. If you go to the bottom of that, that policy?
Yeah, that was...
Okay, there is, there is a current link for that. Or there's a current website link.
It says, "Delete Other Resources in References Section, because the Attorney General memos referenced there are no longer available online."
Okay. Well, there is a website dedicated just to this thing.
Okay. So just put a website link there?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just put Attorney General, and never put the person's name.
Right.
Okay.
And then...
Forty-three, forty-five?
Right. Student Discipline Records.
I think there was an extra "the" in the first sentence.
Oh, in each of the students file. Yeah, okay. In each student's file, we got you. Okay.
Again, there was a, here we used a website link, so that was a reference to the prior one, so that's all I had for that one.
Okay. Sixty-three, forty?
And that just updates a hyperlink.
Sixty-three, forty is the one we're on?
Mm-hmm.
I'll have to get back to that. I don't, I'm looking at this, and I'm somewhat confused by my notes, so...
Okay. Well, let's go back to sixty-five, twenty-five. That's the one that we were...
Right. And just as a, just kind of a review, sixty-five, twenty-five is, this is just a local policy. So this is something that we wrote. It is not recommended from PLS. This is obviously to address the issue that we had before. And we did include, an administrative guideline is not actually board policy, is not something that the board votes on. It's really how to make sure that we follow the board policy. But because it was wrapped up together, and because we didn't have one, we thought we would bring it here to let you guys see that. Ms. Stone, actually, I think, wrote the policy, or a big part of the policy, and also that form, which will be the administrative guideline. So again, Mr. Harrison and Ms. Carpenter are the liaisons to the Policy Committee. We've been through, hopefully, this addresses the concerns you have with vehicles, but we'll certainly try to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Board members, anybody have any specific questions on this? Rob, key down unless...
Check the naming convention of the file. When I open Use of School-Owned Vehicles, in the text and body of the file, it reads "Use of School-owned Vehicles," but the tab at the top is reading Children of Military Families.
Okay.
I don't know why.
And you're saying...
And the file name was Use of School-owned. So I don't want your records to get messed up somehow.
In board docs? That's where I was, is that what you said?
In board docs.
Okay.
Sixty-five, twenty-five, Use of School-owned Vehicles. Click on that thing. It opens up, and its tab title is Children of Military Families, even though the text and the content is Use of School-owned.
Okay.
Look at the very, very top. The tab title. Mine is reading Children of Military. I'm saying that would just mess up your records, and you might not find it somehow.
Dr. Phillips, Mr. Schu, any comments on, it goes, Carolyn, Barry? Okay, Rob, go ahead.
All right. There was an extra "the" in Section A3. Did we address the out-of-county travel needs? So if someone's going to a convention with the vehicle? I didn't see that addressed.
Say that again.
If someone takes the vehicle out of county, we don't, that's, reading this policy, it doesn't permit that.
Right. So if you go to, I guess, number six is what we're talking about, and the best of, that my memory has of the discussion, the first time it came up, was I believe Mr. Schu made the comment of something to the effect of, maybe we don't want people to take vehicles out of the county. And then I think Mr. Shoemaker kind of made the point, well, you may live in Stanley County and work here at the Ed Center, and that'd be a shorter trip than to come from the Cox Mill side of the county. And so there was a little bit of a discussion there, and as a committee, and Mr. Harrison and Ms. Carpenter can speak to this, we kind of tried to figure out what the difference between those two would be, and said, let's say, a limit of 20 miles. We kind of debated that at different times, not for extensive periods of time, but to try to figure out what's the amount that it would be, to say, if you're 20 miles from a school location, whether that's, you live in Charlotte and you come to that side of the county or another, that that would be the limit. But that was just our best gauge of trying to reach the middle of where those two comments were.
Related to that, my question was slightly different than that, but related to that, how many of our employees would be affected, then? Do we know?
I do not have that in front of me now. We have the list of everyone who's there, but exactly how far away they live.
We have, we have some that live in Albemarle and China Grove and Landis. Is that within the range, or is that... I'd like to know at least how many people are affecting by that. But my question was related to, it doesn't say anywhere here, it says that the vehicle needs to be parked, if it's not going to be at your house, at a CCC facility, if there's a need for that to go offsite, that, but you take the vehicle, you've got a conference in Raleigh, or you've got something that's broken down and you need to go out, take that vehicle there. I don't see this policy allowing, or at least addressing that.
I don't, I don't think these vehicles would be going to conferences in Raleigh. I mean, if...
Again, it's a broad, it's a broad policy, so it covers every vehicle. It covers all the vehicles. It doesn't just cover maintenance vehicles. It covers more than that.
And it certainly could be. I mean, what this policy pretty much covers is anybody who's assigned a vehicle. So some of those people are going to take that vehicle home at night, other people are going to park it right here in the parking lot, but when they get to work, it will be their vehicle for the day. If they have a meeting in Winston-Salem, they may very well drive it.
In my mind, I'm thinking of the facilities vehicles that we parked, and then now we're reversing course on it. Okay. I'm with you.
But I don't, I think as drafted, it's silent as to county or location. In other words, if they are used for school business, it's not restricting use to Cabarrus County. I mean, you could take it to Raleigh if it were school business to go to Raleigh with that vehicle.
That's what I want to hear from you, Mark. And just my preferences, I'd like to see a statement on mileage monitoring, you know, something like keeping a log or having a GPS installed in the vehicle, so you can, you know, accountability-wise, making sure the vehicle is used for the intended purposes. And then something about the responsibility for the employee assigned to the vehicle to ensure it's maintained, and the license is current. Is that...
I'm not sure I follow that.
I think the, well...
Does it already say? I'm not sure if it covers it.
Keeping the license current, I think that would fall somewhere over, and you're, somebody in your department's going to keep track of that and notify them. I mean, that's not their responsibility to keep up with.
Well, the intent, if you, of the administrative guideline, which really is the form, is that everybody that was assigned a vehicle would sign this form, and under six monocle defect violations, I will notify the system of any lapse of vehicle registration or licensing. Again, I'll defer to Mr. Enriquez, as far as will that cover, but this, everybody that's assigned a vehicle, whether they take it home, or it's assigned to them for the day, there would be a form that they're ultimately saying, "I'm responsible for this." And if we need to add that, again, I would defer to Mr. Enriquez on that.
Well, number five says, "Drivers must comply with all CCS rules applicable to state, federal, and local laws."
Right.
You can't drive without a license, that's all.
Right. Right.
I mean, basically, vehicle registrations could expire.
But that's the point...
That was the thought going through my head at the time, is whose responsibility is that?
But that's not on them. That's on the department, the Transportation Department, to make sure whatever paperwork's done, and they're notified that, hey, there's a glitch, and you've got to park the vehicle, or, hey, here's your sticker, go stick it on the back, and you're good to go.
That is seven on the administrative guideline. I will notify the system of any lapse of vehicle registration or license.
Okay. So it is on the employee.
Right.
They shouldn't be notifying us of the lapse. We should know that it's getting ready to expire and have it go, but it's there in case it does expire. Ms. Carpenter?
I think Rob has made a very valid point, and a good suggestion. And if we're not doing, I think we should, do we have any kind of logs in our vehicles that say, for instance, someone does take one of our vehicles, say, to a trip to Raleigh or something, a log that's in the vehicle itself to say, hey, I'm taking this car to Raleigh, and they're logging it in the car, and have that in the car? Do we have something like that?
I'm not aware of a system log. That doesn't mean that we don't have it, but I'm not aware of one.
I mean, it, that would be very helpful to say that. I mean, kind of a double check to say, hey, this car went there. to say, hey, this car went there, and, and, I mean, it would be good for maintenance, for everything, but you kind of could double-check, say, that you have that, that could cross-check with records for expenses, if anything was ever called on expenses, to say, somebody did an expense report or something, you would have that, too, to kind of double-check with that, with finance, if you ever had to, that if somebody did expenses, and, but you would have something to kind of go back to, that log would kind of be a backup to something like that, if they did expenses and everything, but too, you would, it would be good to have, I think, to say that that person did it, that that car went there, I just think that might be something good to have, you know, to do something like that, that person took that vehicle, it went to Raleigh, starting miles, ending miles, to have, now, y'all may say, she's off her rocker, but I just think it, it wouldn't be too bad to have that mileage type thing in a vehicle.
It's pretty customary, on a company-owned vehicle, at least in the private sector, to have a mileage log that goes with the vehicle, now, that, you know, the automated piece of that should be fairly easy, whether it's a pool vehicle, and I assume there are pool vehicles that we have, like, we were talking about, well, if you check it out for the day to go to Raleigh or somewhere, we don't, everybody has one that's assigned to them, well, then that's even easier, you don't have to keep up with a pool vehicle, everybody has their own, whatever vehicle they have, they would technically just log their mileage, you know, wherever they're going, or whatever they're, you know, at the start of the day and the end of the day, so that we've got some sort of record, because technically, it, I don't know, maybe I should, we on, maybe shouldn't say this on camera, but technically, that mileage from their house to wherever their work, first stop at work, that's income, that's personal income, so, that's why you log it, and you're supposed to start your log at the, you know, wherever you drive to, the first time you stop, and then you go from there, and all day long, that's called company miles, I'm sorry. Okay, if there's a tool truck on the bed, that's, see, I never had a tool truck on my bed, so that's why I didn't have to mess with that.
Maybe we need to put some tool trucks on the bed.
The bigger point of what Rob's trying to say, I think, is valid, that there should be a log, or should be something that goes with the vehicle.
If you have a GPS, basically, does the same thing.
Yeah, the technology now is so much greater than even when I had to do it, that there's got to be a fairly inexpensive way for us to do it, so I tell you what, we'll leave it at this, if you want to have Mr. Meehan in his department, maybe try to just at least look into what it would take, or what it's going to cost, or how to, how to make that happen, that may be something you can just bring back to us at a different time.
We can add to the, to the administrative guideline, you know, number nine, I will keep a daily log of mileage, and then we can come up with the form, if you want us to add that, again, I'll defer to Mark, or Mr. Enriquez, about if there's an issue.
I hear people talking about a log, but the other take on it is, in effect, to be able to audit the use of the vehicle, however you collect the data on the use of the vehicle, the real purpose is, and after-the-fact audit of the prior use of the vehicle, therefore, you'd need some kind of means of having those records, whether it's checking the odometer, or checking the logs, or making sure the odometer and the logs match each other for an audit, if that were necessary.
Well, I tell you what, here's, here's what we're going to do, just go back, as we move forward.
Now, I'm trying to put this to bed.
Well, I haven't even said one word. Well, go ahead.
Everybody else has got to have it.
Go ahead.
Well, first thing, we're getting into minutia, the expense statement probably has something on it, the supervisor has authorized the individual to drive to some spot, somebody has supervised, said, you're going to drive somewhere, that should be on the expense statement, did I use a company vehicle, or system vehicle, or not, check it off, expense statement maybe needs to have the mileage that you used in there, I don't know how that's set up, but those are probably minutia that are already there, just need to make sure that we're doing it, and that the supervisors are giving instructions to do this, because we're now, we as a board are getting into how they, how they execute, and that's not what our job is, we're not into their execution, they need to do good business practices to execute this, and we don't need to micromanage them, that's not our job. The only other thing I have a problem with is, when you say, lives more than twenty miles from a CCS school facility, and then you go, and, one or more of the following conditions are met, you've still got a limit of twenty miles, so it should be and/or one of the following, because you could have an employee that's a very good, like, HVAC tech, that lives twenty-five miles away, that person's on call, but, you know, you know you're having a problem with a school, and you want that person to be able to get to that school, because you know that you just did an implementation there, or something like that, and you want them to be able to come, twenty miles seems to be an arbitrary number, I don't know if you really want to get into arbitrary numbers like that, because you don't, like Rob said, you really don't know how far these folks live, but if you're going to be, you know, because we're on the lower end of the pay scale for our maintenance technicians especially, and for our computer technicians, you know, who knows where we're getting those folks from, twenty miles seems to be kind of just an arbitrary, so, you either have them, you either, I think you should eliminate the number, and base it on the hiring decision, and then it's up to the supervisor to monitor and figure it out from there.
And to some degree, it wasn't arbitrary, other than trying to get a sense of the discussion that was made at the board meeting, of where we might reach a middle ground, but we also knew when we came to this, that you guys may have strong feelings about, you know, we don't want people driving fifty miles to work if we give them a vehicle, and so we just tried to put a number there and say, if twenty's good with you, or whatever you want to do, eliminate it is fine, we just wanted to try to get a sense of the board when they discussed it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker, yeah, go ahead.
And the last thing I had, as reference to being consistent upon our notifications, and I had a reference to policy seventy-three hundred, and it has to do with the different policies and the timeframes that we require employees to notify HR, and if we call it the HR director, or we call it HR, those all should be consistent.
Okay, and that? Yes.
Number four, down towards the end, be four.
Did you get that?
We did that one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the only thing I'm unclear about is the miles.
Well, that's what I'm going back to, and we're going to, just take, take a look, if there's something, if there's information that it helps provide, you guys, in your department, and with finance, if there's something there that we need to be doing, that we're not currently doing, then bring back a recommendation to us, just take a look at it and see if there's a reason, you know, it, I know, I mean, I understand it, because I used to live in that world, I had to log miles, and I had a company vehicle, and all that kind of stuff, if there's something else that we're doing, and we're covered, then that's fine. Okay, did you want to comment on that? We're going to beat this horse a little bit longer.
The log you're envisioning would be something that stays in the car every day when you drive to two different schools to do those maintenance work, at the end of the day, you'd write down, today I went to these two schools, and this is how many miles, and here's my current odometer reading, is that what you're envisioning?
I think that's what, that's what Rob envisioned, and I, that's kind of what I, there's a, you know, I've seen it, and I mean, I know how that works, and it just goes with the vehicle.
Okay, and so, I mean, I think, so it's a question of, is something like that being done, and then I guess the question is, if nothing like that's being done, you want an administrative recommendation on whether they think that's a good idea, or an extra burden on employees, or what, what the staff's recommendation would be on such a requirement.
Exactly, or is there some financial reason that we should be doing if we're not, or some reason that, here's why we're not doing that, and there may be a very valid reason, so, okay, thank you, Mr. Walter, for that, we'll move on to three point oh four.
The only thing I'm, I'm still not sure about the mileage limit, and maybe I just missed that.
Oh, do you talk about the log, or the twenty?
The twenty miles.
Well, if, if, it's in Carolyn and David, we're on that, if we want to comment on
If I can, as I recall, we've bandied back between fifteen miles and twenty-five miles, and we felt that twenty miles was the best.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't made no comment, I've just been listening on it, and I don't hold this up, but going back to our original conversations, which was, you know, from years ago when we did this, there has to be a certain level of supervision from the drivers of these vehicles, obviously, if a person, and I think one, one of our employees lived in Albemarle, and whoever that supervisor is, surely, unless he was an HVAC, or a high-demand type person, you wouldn't send him to the Cox Mill Elementary, or Cox Mill High School, which would be clean across the county, which would probably be thirty-five or forty miles, and so there has to be some type, and vice versa, if somebody lived in Charlotte, that worked for Cabarrus, you wouldn't want to send them all the way out to the Mount Pleasant High School, there has to be a certain level of supervision from the driver of that vehicle, and, and I'm like Mr. Schumaker, you know, it's not, it's not our business to micromanage your department, or that department, so, there has to be policy in place to protect the asset and the interest of the school system, that's equitable to the employee especially, you know, especially if he, you know, was hired as a, he got a company vehicle to start with, but you still have to have limitations, though, and I think the key to this, though, is the supervisor's knowledge of what this policy says and what it means.
Okay, with that, leave the twenty, if you find out that it's not working, there's something needs to be adjusted, you can bring it back at a later date.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to three point oh four, second reading?
Is there a second read, Ms., Dr. Phillips caught a mistake that was basically just a reference in, that we fixed earlier today, and outside of that, I'm not aware of anything that should prevent you from moving these on.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments on these, everybody okay with consent? Rob's looking at notes, so I'm going to wait for just a second.
On this one for automatic external defibrillator, what is the plan to give the board a report? Is that, and who is our program coordinator, do we already?
Ms. Smith, I think, and Ward Smith, is it Ward officially assigned with that? Because Donna works with that with trainers, and Ward also makes sure that that's there for a general safety.
It says you're all giving us a report, is there, you know, so that would be given by Donna at some point, and you're, okay, and then the, no, that's, that was the only comment, early question I had on that one.
You going down each individual one?
I am.
Fifty-two, ten?
I would note on fifty-two, ten, we've got the same tab issue, where it's coming up as communicable disease, even though it's, even though it's actually a non-corrective material, so, you know, those diseases, yeah, that's right, it's, it's spreading, so.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. And you're on seventy-two, forty?
Seventy-two, forty, is it under A one, should we add a minivan driver? Because it's a school vehicle with less than fifteen passengers.
A one.
A one. Minivan, add minivan to that.
But does the minivan require a commercial license?
No, it does not.
It does not?
The minivans are not, you don't have to have the commercial license for a minivan, I think.
But I think the intent was, we want the driver to follow the same procedures, don't we, if we're transporting children?
I would not include minivan drivers under the definition of a DOT-regulated employee.
Okay, well, I just didn't want that excluded.
All right, we okay with consent? Okay, Ms. Monroe, we will put that on the consent agenda, thank you, Dr. Louder. And Dave, we will welcome you to the podium, three point oh five, request for approval of bid to change out T-12 light fixtures at Wolf Meadow Elementary School.
Thank you, and this particular item, hopefully, I can try to alleviate maybe some, some possible confusion that you may have, we had many bids in the board information, and actually, we were able to pull all of those except for one, that exceeded two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the agenda, and that, that should be good news, the, so, just dealing with the, the one item, which is the lighting bid for Wolf Meadow Elementary School, just note that this was part of a package bid, where we bid several other schools at the same time, and we're awarding those individually, per school, so each school was its own project. This particular bid, well, all these bids were bid on April twenty-fourth, and the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was TR Curly Electric, their price was two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-eight dollars, this particular bid had a few unusual issues with it, and that is because of the other volume of bids that we had on the other lighting projects, one of the bidders, well, let me, let me back up, Armond Construction withdrew their bid due to an error, on the bid tab, they were the, they appeared to be the low bidder, they withdrew, so the second low bidder was Watson Electric, and Watson Electric was fortunate in that they were able to be, to receive, they were the low bidder on several other schools, due to the volume of the work, they didn't want to do all of the work, in the timeframes that we had specified, and we, the projects do have end dates, and, and they didn't intend, nor did they want to have all of the projects, so, TR Curly was the next bid, and that actually is very close to the Watson Electric price, again, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-eight dollars, the project is the replacement of T-12 fixtures with T-8 fixtures, and the work will begin shortly after purchase orders and products and metals are, are complete, we do, superintendent does recommend that this project be awarded to TR Curly.
Okay, board members, any questions about the bid, does everybody understand that we had one person pull out, and then the other contractor that was the low person had too many other projects and gave that one up?
Did we only have the three bidders for these, this project?
That's correct.
I'm thinking, you know, that between the low bidder, obviously, he made an error, so he had to withdraw his bid, and the second and the third highest bidder were very comparable, which, you know, five or six, seven thousand dollars difference between the two, but this might be a project that we might want to rebid, are we pushed on time for this day?
Well, the expected price, this is, this is, it's still a good price, when we were budgeting the project, this came in slightly under our budget, so we were happy about that, again, the, the Watson Electric price, from all the other projects that we looked at, they had a very competitive bid on all their prices, so we do feel that this is very much in line, that it is a very good competitive bid.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments, Dr. Phillips?
It's more of a comment, and I had already sent to you an individual email, but when I was looking at the other, but obviously, as you point out here, that the two qualified bids, let's call them, are quite close together, and so that would give you confidence that it's like, okay, we're getting a, you know, a competitive price there, but on some of the other projects that ended up being under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, there was a wide range on the bidding, and it wasn't always that, you know, one particular company was always high, 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 in some cases, that company was low on one and high on another, and it just made me think that we didn't give those companies enough information to be able to accurately predict what the costs were going to be, and I know that when I'm in a situation where I'm putting together a proposal, or a response to a request for a proposal, and I'm not really sure what the scope is, I build in an extra cushion into my cost, and I say, well, okay, you know, if I thought it, you know, if I was certain that's what they wanted, I'd be asking two-hundred thousand, but because I'm not certain, I'm going to ask two-hundred-and-forty thousand, and I'm a little worried that that may be what has happened in, in this, this process.
So, the variables in this bid really was the contractor's labor, and, and their desire to get the bid, the, we specified the number of fixtures, so, at, one of the projects that got before you, well, Wolf Meadow, one thousand forty-four fixtures, so, that is nailed down, there's over five thousand six hundred fixtures in all of these bids, we specified how many fixtures per school, so, in that, the variables become, you know, the contractor's desire, you know, for that particular one, it could be that they really didn't want this school, but they wanted that one, and so they're going to be more competitive on, on that one, time certainly is an issue, and, and so, I think that addresses your question, you know, and we also said, you know, here are the type of light fixtures, you know, that the manufacturers, you know, that are acceptable.
Okay, so your interpretation of it is that they, they basically were self-selecting to say, okay, they wanted to be responsive to all of the, the requests, so they put in something, but since they may have thought, well, okay, I can only really do two, so I'll, I'll put in competitive bids on two, and uncompetitive bids on three, or something like that. Or I'll put in a heavier bid, a higher bid, thinking, well, if I get that one, I could always go out and contract extra staff, and...
That's possible, and, and also, we had them, we had visits to every school, so that they could see the lights, and in some cases, you know, the lights are, some are going to be more accessible, you know, there may be more issues, you know, at one school than another, some contractor may felt that that, you know, that that was going to provide them an advantage, you know, depending on how they're set up, so, those are all possibilities, it, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to, you know, get into the bidder's mind and know exactly what, what they're, what was driving them, on why they priced things the way they did.
Well, I feel better knowing that, that they were, they were given the opportunity to go and actually look. Well, I, I feel better knowing that, that they were, they were given the opportunity to go and actually look at the.
They looked at the fixtures, they looked at the schools. We told them the, a specific number of fixtures and we told them the acceptable manufacturers of the light fixtures or the, the ballasts and bulbs.
Okay, all right. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Schu, you had a question?
Yes, I did. In reference to the T-12 fixtures. What happens to the T-12 fixtures? I'm just curious because, you know, the fluorescent, I'm sure they're fluorescent six feet, eight feet bulbs. And I'm assuming that these, this bidder has taken all that in consideration and they'll be disposing of those, whatever means.
The, the bulbs, we asked that they be turned over to the owner. They'll be added to our inventory to help.
For replacements in other cases where we don't put T-8s. Okay. And they'll keep the fixtures or we keep the fixtures? Obviously probably wouldn't.
We don't need the fixtures, so they'll be disposed of.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Any comments, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, how long would it take you to rebid? I, I mean, I just have a problem with it just being one bidder and that $8,500 could sure go for something else. I, I, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's what the difference is. And I hate for us just to have one bid. How long would it?
We got, we got three.
No, we don't. I mean, one's been.
We got three. One made an error and one gave the job up.
Oh, yeah. So that, that's, you've got one left. You've got one left. That's all you got.
But that's not one bidder. That's one contractor.
Well, you've got one contractor left. Because one you can't use, one's not doing it. That leaves one. Three, take away two's one. That's one.
I'm fully aware of that, that, that math.
Two, take away, but that's one. So we've only got one. So that's, that's all you, you've got is one and the difference between that is $8,500. And like I say, I could use $8,500 for something else. How long would it take you to rebid?
We would advertise in the paper and we'd go through the process again. I'm not sure if these contractors would bid it because the prices are out there. We might have to try to change the scope. I'd have to figure out in what meaningful way to do that. And, and so I would say several weeks.
Now, why would you have to change the scope? You've already got the scope put out there.
If I'm bidder number two, I'm going to look, well, number one, the Watson Electric who already gave up this project probably isn't going to bid it because it's theirs to have right now and they're walking away from it because they've got enough work. So, you know, that's, that's one. The others, we might get meaningful bids, but the one who's the low bidder, the one who, TR Curly, they might look at it and say, well, you know, I was recommended for the job, but I didn't get it. I've got other things to do. I'm not going to mess with it. They may think that way, they may not. I don't know. I don't know if they bid it or not.
No, they were higher than the other bidder. I mean, they were, they were, they were higher. About $8,500 too high. So, and, and like I say, the other one may come back with a better bid. And we may get it at a lower price, too. And that's, that's what it's all about, the getting the best price.
Well, I think I would try to reconfigure the project so that, and, and the, and the, the timeframes because losing a couple of weeks is important. So I would reconfigure the projects, re, re, change the timeframe and, and re-advertise it and put it out as a different project that would include that school.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Walter?
Explain it to us one more time about how, why the other projects were not, are not coming to us, but this one is.
We, sure. For a time, QSCB projects, all QSCB projects that were bid were coming to the board for approval and that was a requirement of QSCB. So over time, I guess, I guess it became normal, you know, to, to bring, you know, significant bids, you know, to the school board. But in, in checking, because I really just wanted to, to make sure we weren't being wasteful, you know, of your time. And, and we did, you know, Kelly researched this with the attorney to make sure, you know, that, you know, what the policy was and signature authorities were. So $250,000 is the administration's signature authority to be able to approve projects. So less than $250,000, you don't have to see it.
But ultimately, we're spending $582,000 for these four projects, is that right?
Well, they're individual projects. They're individual POs and so.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to figure out, here, for Mount, for Wolf Meadow, you've got the, the fixtures replaced and the bulbs. But the other projects, we didn't do that?
What we were anticipating, we did two things for this project that aren't before you. And just because the public doesn't know what they were. It was Central Cavers High School. It was J. and Furies Middle School. It was Mount Pleasant High School. Those projects, we bid two ways. Base bid was bulbs and ballast replacement, T-12s to T-8s. But we also wanted to see, and we were hoping, you know, that if it would be very competitive to go with the entire fixture change. So that was why we bid both. We're walking a little bit of a fine line, a tightrope with, if we, we, we have a lot of T-12s in the district. We do need to replace those. The amount of money that we have right now will not replace the entire T-12 inventory in the district. Will we get funding next fiscal year? We certainly hope so. If we don't get funding, well, we need to maximize the, the bulb and, and ballast replacement as, as much as possible. So we'd love to have the comfort, you know, of knowing that the, all the future funding's going to come in place and we're going to be able to do it. But, so we bid it both ways and we wanted to see what the difference was and, and how much of a increase it was going to be to replace the entire fixture. So it, there is a significant increase and, and, which isn't completely unexpected, but we wanted to see on a competitive scale what, what that was. So the other three are going bulbs and ballast. Now, Wolf Meadow is a very unique floor plan, very unique ceiling layout. If you've ever been there and if you look up, you know, in one of the classrooms, you might kind of wonder, you know, about. It's very unique and very difficult, very interesting shapes and they're all unique shapes. So that one really needed to have the fixtures replaced. It's a unique fixture, not one that we really support to a great deal in the school, school district. So we're trying to get this back to a standard fixture.
Well, that helps me understand it a little bit better. And I guess my last question was the timing of these things. You know, if Watson Electric was, you know, such a low bid on most of these, why not extend our timeframe if they're too busy and let them take the time that they need to get these projects done if we can save money on the price?
As part of the project, we always try to define end dates. We need the end dates, you know, otherwise the project can, you know, continue on. So we did define the, the end dates. We did want to spend the money this fiscal year. We did want to have the benefit of the lighting this fiscal year and the energy savings this fiscal year.
So these projects will be done when, when school's out or while school's in session or how do you?
It's in, it's in June and I don't remember the specific date, but I think it's early to mid-June.
Okay, that's all I had to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Do you want, Ms. Carpenter, do you want this on action?
Definitely.
Okay. Well, you can bring up or make a motion next week to, to rebuild, rebid. Any other comments to make? Dr. Phillips?
Well, I, Dave, I think that the point you just made about energy savings is, is an important one that we'll need to consider. If I recall, I think the payback time on these projects was supposed to be three years and you may want to go back and refer to that. But what you ought to do is, is calculate what the, how, you know, if, if we wait three months to get this done, will we lose the $8,000 difference? Just because we, we, we are not saving energy during those few months? Of course, if it's the summer months, it may not matter. But I think that's something that I'd like to see is, how, how much does a one-month delay cost us in energy savings in, in not replacing these bulbs?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Phillips.
I just, I know there was a question about the, the authority and I did talk to Ms. Klutz. Your board policy 6420 specifically, and we had some debate over what the right amount was when it was presented and it was most recently revised last year. But it says that the superintendent or designated authorized to enter into contracts or approve change orders up to 250,000. So just to avoid bringing every, you know, $50,000 contract before the board, you've delegated that authority. You don't have to do that, but I think that's the, the thinking on these fairly routine processes rather than have a board discussion every time we've got that authority. And so I've told staff that the board has delegated and if the superintendent wants to approve it. Now, it, it also says if it's over 250, it has to be reviewed by the board attorney and presented to the board. So we've kind of got, for better or for worse, that's kind of the magic number. If we go over that and the contract calls for an expenditure of more than that amount of money, then I look at it, it comes to you for approval. And that's, we can change that there, you know, in special things like QSCB, there's a requirement that everything got approved by the board. So that's why stuff was being brought. That was a federal program. They wanted the board approve, you know, each expenditure.
Okay. And all of those board members, any of those superintendent, superintendent recommendations are coming to the subcommittee. So just, it, it, it's not just him doing it. You know, Kelly's on the committee, she comes to the meetings and Dr. Schu. So we, all of that would at least be seen by two board members that are on that committee. So, and if for some reason, even if it was under that threshold, if we thought the entire board needed to see it, we would say, we would, in that meeting, say, no, we're going to take this to the whole board. So that's how, that's how that works. Ms. Monroe, we're going to put that on the action agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I need to speak on this just for a minute. In reference to the 250,000 cap that we have for the administration. Now, you know, I, I was obviously on the board when this was done. And one thing that I would want clarity on, and Mark, you'd have to clarify, you know, all of these projects that we're talking about and that was removed are very similar in nature. And so even though they're different projects, but you know, in times past, when we do vestibules, we do multiple schools and one project, that type thing. And I would not want to see us circumvent that by breaking these policies, I mean, breaking these projects down where that they fall with underneath the board's authorization. And I mean, I wouldn't, I, I'm not saying that we would do that. I'm not saying that Dr. Shepherd or his staff would do that. But that was the purpose of that policy, though, was to, if you've got five projects and they're all similar in nature and the total is 700,000 and you break them down where they're all under 250, then to me, that's circumventing the board policy. And I wouldn't want to see us do that. And that's just a general comment, but, you know, Mr. Enriquez, you might can.
I would agree. No, I would agree. I don't think, you can't, you can't take one big project and break it into little pieces as a way to go around it. The way it's worded is, you know, it, it would be a contract. So I agree. You could, you could see trying to divide it. I do think where you've got different, things at different schools, even though they're related, to me, those are different projects. But you would, I, I agree, you can't take a big project and just break it down into four pieces each that are 249 and say, well, it's a million dollars and it's approved. And I would certainly advise the superintendent he couldn't do that and that would need to come before you. The other thing I would note, even for, for all these contracts, it has to be budgeted money. So it's not authorization to spend outside of budget. That, all these contracts have to be money that is available and the board has budgeted these expenditures. So it is, he is spending money that's already budgeted and you're authorizing him to go ahead. We've got money budgeted for these projects. We've got bids in. You're authorizing him if it's less than 250 to go ahead and execute those contracts. So it's not new spending, it's spending within the budget that's already been established and approved by the board.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Enriquez. Ms. Carpenter, do you have another comment?
I'm just going to make one comment. Last week, and I think you, you did the finance thing last week, too. And I'm just going to make one comment and that's it. I just went through the school board finance thing. And no matter what you say and the little guidelines we're saying, the five, 250, whatever, I don't care what it is. It boils down to, we're responsible by general statute for any money. I don't care what it is, what it boils down to. Mark, you can say whatever, but we're responsible, it's our job. We were elected to, for every penny. And, you know, it, it'd be our hides, no matter what. So they, they come back to us and we are the ones that are legally responsible for every penny that's spent on this board. And so we better make dag gum sure that we know where it went and what it's spent for. Because we're going to be the ones they're going to come after. They're not going to come after Kelly, they're not going to come after Dr. Shepherd. Well, they're going, they're, but we are responsible.
Hold on, we're, we're, we're getting off track, but I think what she just said, since we're, this isn't a public meeting, she just said she is legally responsible.
Well, you're bonded and, and, but they will come after us, though. Is that not?
You, you are, you are correct. I just didn't want something to go out that's not, not accurate. And Kelly is legally responsible. But at, at the end of the day, we have to answer for what we've done and what we've spent, the projects that we've done. So thank you for bringing that up. You're exactly right. Okay, we're going to move on to three point oh six. We're going to keep Mr. Burnett at the podium. Our request for approval to grant a permanent easement that basically amounts to about two feet width of asphalt over some smaller portion of a driveway. So, Mr. Burnett, go, go ahead.
Yeah, and let me also mention, I just actually got an email from Bruce Buckley with, returned his office. And what, the email actually has a revised square footage for the easement. So let me cover that. It's 248.75 square feet.
248?
248. And the dimensions on that are, appear to be 102 feet by four feet, four feet. So that needs to be noted. So the item here is.
Who's doing this?
Me. Well, I closed it because he said the dimensions changed, so I figured. Okay.
Yeah, actually, the, the second, the second attachment might be better and that's the, the easement encroachment. So the, this easement really came about, a driveway was misplaced, mislaid and is slightly on school system property and it's the Culture and Web Elementary School property. Ms. Ann Morrison with H-A-R-M-M-J-E-G is, has discovered that a small portion of their property's driveway is, is encroaching on our, I'm sorry, our Brown McCallister Elementary School property. This is a, a permanent easement and the language that, that we have in there is that should they demolish their driveway, the easement, you know, would, the land would come back to us, to, to Board of Education. So it would revert back. But it will be a permanent, permanent easement for as long as the driveway's there. The easement would allow them to maintain the property and, and have access to the property. The consideration is $10. And, and again, we, you know, have the, the new, the new dimensions, you know, on that that we'll need to get that finalized.
Okay, board members, any, any questions for, for Dave? This is, um, basically what's going, what, what, the reason that they want to clean this up is in case they sell the property, they can get clear title and they won't hold up a closing. That's really what it boils down to. So we'll start, Dr. Phillips, we'll start on your end.
I, I mean, overall, I'm, you know, in, in favor of it, we're being a good neighbor. But the one thing I would like to see in this easement document is some kind of a statement that they can only use that as a driveway. I don't want to see this, you know, a future owner deciding they're going to bump out the garage and, and, you know, put a carport or something like that onto the property that is school property. So needs to just be that we're giving them an easement for the current purpose or whatever the right language is, Mr. Enriquez, so that they can only use it as a driveway and that's it.
No future improvements.
No future improvements.
Good point, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, no. Mr. Schu, you're good. Mr. Schumaker? Mr. Schumaker.
Yeah, and the only, the only reason this happened was whoever poured the driveway thought they lined up to a telephone pole in the back and thought that they were on the property line, because there is a telephone line or a pole at the end of the property. So the theory is, is they did that, and driveway was apportioned in width so that they could get into a garage at the house itself. Is that correct?
It's a good theory. It's years, it's years ago. I don't know when the driveway was built, so...
You're probably right. Ms. Carpenter, do you have a question?
Yeah, same thing with what Jeff said. As long as that's in there, that they don't put something over it besides...
Mr. Walter, you have a comment?
I'm a little more concerned. Is that power line on our property?
Yes.
So the power line is on our property. I mean, it looks just, if you go to the Google Earth, you know, street view, I mean, it looks like they're maintaining the yard there that's on our property, because it looks, I mean, just from the, looking at the picture, it looks like it's been mowed, and it looks like it's part of their yard.
Very well could be. And I wouldn't say that that's unusual.
So they're already maintaining our property for us? Is that...
Just a small part of the property. But I can't say, I haven't been there, I haven't seen it, so...
So do we have any plans to expand parking at McAllister at any point, or is it...
Currently, and I know talking with...
I mean, that would make it very difficult for these folks to...
Right. In talking with Lynn, who was familiar with this and has been following through with it, he didn't see any interference or conflict.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. I agree with Dr. Phillips, and also what you mentioned, that you've added language, I think even since we first talked about it at our meeting of if the asphalt ever goes away, the easement goes away. So I'm fine with that. That's the perfect piece to add. So, okay. Board members, action or consent? A nod of the heads for consent? Okay, Ms. Monroe, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Oop, I've written that in the wrong spot. And we will move on to board meeting calendar. This we discussed in April, and it was tabled until May. Doc, is there somebody that's going to present the board calendar to us? Dr. Shepherd?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay.
Sorry. So in your last meeting, your April meeting, the board meeting calendar was presented to you, and at that time, you asked that it not be placed on the April business session for consideration, that it be moved to the May business session meeting. So I'm proposing that you place this on your action agenda so you can discuss it and vote on it next week.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And this is the, this is the exact same calendar that they gave us before. I guess I'll go ahead and interject as your chairman. I'm going to recommend that we approve the calendar that they've submitted. Mr. Walter, I know that you've wanted to have meetings outside of the board room, and I think that was the reason that it came up. So that's, with that being said, all right. Where's, who's providing this document?
This is Rob's.
That would be mine, and it's on, it's on the board docs here.
Okay. Well, I didn't, I guess, I didn't see it on board docs. Oop, that's mine. Okay. Well, we can have some discussion about the calendar, and then obviously with Mr. Walter, I'm going to assume you're going to want this on the action agenda, since you've got a calendar for us to look at. So we'll, we'll start with you. You can state your case. I will tell you, this board's already decided this question. So we're kind of rehashing something that we've already done and talked about. Next year at this time, you'll have a brand-new board, and you can bring it up again, but this board has already...
I would go with...
Well, hold on. We're going to start with Rob. And when I say that, I mean that we had a calendar, and we voted specifically, this board voted to revert back to not doing the traveling show.
Yeah, I'll agree. That's correct for this particular year. We did have not set the calendar for the next year.
Well, but...
That's, that's why this proposal is to you today.
Go right ahead.
So, again, I am someone who I think it's important that we go out to the community and showcase our schools. So that's why I've made a suggestion here that we take three of our board meetings and do those off-site, or away from the Ed Center. I've made a suggestion for three schools. I'm not set on those three schools, but I thought those three schools would make sense to go visit. And the one I had here was on September. I think we should visit Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, northwest area of the county, so people don't have to drive all the way out here. It's an opportunity, again, to showcase that school, showcase the needs that are in that school, as we'll see in a couple issues. We have folks from FER, not FER, but Bogart that will be relocating. There's an opportunity for folks to come talk to us about that. I think that's a nice place to hold one of those board meetings. Another suggestion, again, is with the bond and the Mount Pleasant Middle School issue, to hold a meeting out in Mount Pleasant for those folks, those stakeholders. And then next year, to hold a meeting at Culture and Web in February. I think it's unfortunate that Culture and Web was left off the bond. I think an opportunity to bring the public out to that school that's in an area where folks may not be able to travel, they can get to that school, they can come here, talk to us. And again, it's an opportunity mainly to show some support to the staff and the students and the parents, stakeholders in that area, so that we do care about Culture and Web. We think that that is a school that needs attention, and it needs attention soon. And then, secondly, my other suggestion is that we've had our budget hearing prior to having any information on the budget. I think that maybe we should try moving that to, after we've had the budget presented to us, the public can come and make some comments on that area. So again, I'd make a motion that we consider this alternate...
We're not making motions tonight. We're just going to have discussion, and then we'll be an action agenda item for next year.
That's fine.
So then we can do that. So if you don't have any other comments, we can go on to Ms. Carpenter.
Well, I'm just going to add a few comments. I'll say that when I was on the commission, we traveled without any problem. We went to every municipality in Cabarrus County. It worked fine. And, you know, some people say, well, we're on computers. We have to have our computers. Well, before we had computers, we had paper, and we did just fine. I think it's very important to go to different areas of the county. I think Rob picked great areas to go to, and I would support this. I don't think it's bad actually getting out in the communities and going to the people. So I would support his ideas.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, do you have any comments? And you, go ahead.
Well, I believe, you know, but Rob has some good ideas about visiting the other schools. I don't necessarily think that the work session is the appropriate venue for it, because at our work session, there's really no room for public comment. As we saw when we went to Winkler, we had no public... We had Central come, because Central was on the agenda to have a discussion. If we're going to have a meeting and we want to bring the public out, you have to have a meeting that's going to be centric on the school so that you can invite the people to come, and you have a very specific agenda for having them there. If you want people to be involved, then you have to have something on the agenda that gets them to be involved. That means probably some other type of meeting, I would think, rather than a business meeting or a work session. And I think we should probably, we should try to work towards that, especially with the needs that we have in this county on our schools. We had several schools left off of the bond, and we're going to have to get them, we're going to have to go for another bond, and we're going to have to get community support. And outcry to say, we need to do some renovations in our schools. So we probably need to do some out-of-cycle board-type activities at these different schools to listen to the public, to talk about where we are. But I don't necessarily agree that this is the right venue for this. And then it's, then on the public, on the budget, public hearing on the budget, the one thing I think we could possibly do better is get some information out before we have our budget work session that the public could have time to look at and then come in and give us a little feedback on it. But by the time we wait for April 6, we pretty much, we don't, we don't have a lot of room to make any adjustments to the budget time, and it starts eating into our cycle. But according to the rules that we have, that we're under, we don't really have to supply a budget to the county until May. Is that correct, Kelly?
May 15, according to general statute, but they want it a lot earlier than that. May 15, according to general statute, but they want it a lot earlier than that. So if you're going to, you're going to accept public impact, public to impact...
Then we push it out.
Then you're going to have to push it way back, way back. Everything that we do...
We'll push it back a whole month.
At least.
Yeah.
Because then you're going to need time to react.
Right.
So if you want the public to impact it, then you're going to have discussion and impact, and so I would say probably two months. You're going to push it back. Instead of starting November, December, you need to start September, October.
Oh, you mean for the actual budgeting process?
Sure. Everything pushes back.
Okay. That's what you meant by pushing back. I was thinking pushing back the budget meeting or finalization of the budget. Okay. I understand. All right. Well, we'll have more discussion on that, but that's just my general view.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've been kicking this around for two years, for two years. Rob, it's a noble thing that you're wanting to do, and Ms. Carpenter, it's a noble thing to get out in the community. But my experience on this is unless you've got cake and ice cream and you're serving a meal, you're not going to have a big turnout. That's the way it's been. You get, you have something neat, they'll show up. But when you're going to talk about budget and talk about school board things, I mean, you look and see here tonight, how many do we have? We got five people in addition to cabinet and board members. And you're talking about the expense for Ms. Monroe, when we were talking about going back to the paper, we're still, you know, we're moving forward. We're not backing up, guys. This is the era of technology, and we've got technology, and if we choose not to use it, there's something wrong with that picture. And when we went out to Winkler, Ms. Klutz, I mean, Ms. Probst is not here tonight, but my guesstimation was that it cost us $1,500, $2,000 to have that. And the reason we, but the main reason we did it was because we were expecting a large crowd. We probably had 50 people there, and the majority of them was from Central Cabarrus because they wanted to express their opinions on the athletics for the school. Now, for Ms. Monroe to have to go and prepare 25 board books again, at a minimum, 25 board books, and for technology to set up technology in these older schools, particularly Mount Pleasant Middle, they don't have the infrastructure there that would make this an easy transition. And guys, I love you, but I can't support you on this, Rob. I'm sorry. I can't support you on it because I don't want to add the extra burden on staff. They're always asked to do more and to do more and to do more continually with less. And this is another one of the deals where we'd have to ask them to do more. They're already here, the majority of them are already here, but to pack up and go somewhere else and take technology, and for Ms. Monroe to do all that she'd have to do, and to lug everything out there and lug everything back, I don't see a lot of folks helping her do that. And so I can't support it, and I hope that we'll put this to bed. But anyway, I only got six more months, and you can do what you want to, you know. But I want to do the right thing for not only this board, but the public and for the staff. I look out for the staff as well, and they don't need any more unfunded things. That's my opinion, Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison, do you have any comments?
Does anybody know what a kitten caboodle is? But it was logistically a complicated situation when we tried this before, and there, it was mixed results at best. I don't see why we couldn't completely accomplish Mr. Walter's and Mrs. Carpenter's intention by having a meet-and-greet type of informal assembly of the board members at an event which is already planned or coordinated with the schools, individual schools' calendar. And my gosh, there's dozens or hundreds of things going on at every school all across the county any time of the school year. The formality and the officialness of us meeting and tapping the gavel, you know, wouldn't have to be part of any kind of thing. If we were meeting the public, the public would want to meet us instead of us being behind some podium or some dais here that separates us in more ways than one. If we're going to meet the public, then let's meet the public and go out and talk to the parents while the parents are out of school, setting their children up for some program or some activity, or some parent-teacher organization's activity. I'm fine with meeting the public. Let's meet the public. But let's meet them halfway, as opposed in some kind of formal and overly official kind of capacity. Let's find any school, ask them what their calendar is, and go out and when and where it's appropriate, and we would not be in the way of some activity, be there to meet the public. And that, to me, would accomplish what the goal is without having to incur the expense or the logistical nightmare, really, of packing this, you know, show up to go out to some site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, you have comments?
Well, I tend to agree with Mr. Schumaker and Mr. Harrison. I think a better solution is to have some kind of a less formal listening session at the three sites that Rob has suggested, partly because, as I already said, part of the expense is of trying to move a formal meeting there is that we tape our formal meetings, and so we have to have all these microphones, and then we have to have all the internet access to get the agendas up. And of course, the TV guys have to move all their equipment in, they have to get the right lighting and so on and so forth, and that's what drives the expense up. I think a lot of people get intimidated talking on TV, and they probably, we would probably get better interaction if we had a less formal event that wasn't videotaped, and we just talk about whatever the public wants to talk about, specific to that area. And certainly, as Rob has pointed out, you know, we're going to have issues, we're going to have to redistrict boundary lines for elementary schools in the northwest area, so we need to go out there and listen to folks out there. And as he said, we've got to deal with the questions of what's going to happen at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and we should definitely shine a light on the conditions at Culture and Web. So I would definitely support a compromise that would say, well, let's have some informal listening meetings at those three locations. So that's on that. I do have one issue, just one. Both calendars are suggesting that we meet on Monday, April 6, but that is the Monday after spring break for that year, and I'm wondering if that puts a little bit of a burden on the staff to have them preparing for our meeting while everyone's on spring break, and we'd rather be on vacation. So is there a possibility that we either shift everything by a week, or, you know, instead of meet on Monday, meet on Tuesday? I don't know. What...
Okay. Well, why don't, this is going to be an action item, so we'll give that some thought for this week, because you guys will be the ones that would have to do all of that to get prepared. So, okay. Rob, I appreciate your thoughtfulness, especially putting together a document, and it's well-thought out and planned, and this will be on the action agenda, and we'll take formal action on it next week. All right. Fantastic. Let's see. We will move on. That's it. I'm going paper and not paperless. I want to make sure I didn't miss a page. So, okay. Board members?
Motion.
Outstanding meeting. Appreciate all your input and your comments, and I would like a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Schumaker and a second by Mr. Walter.
Second, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.